Yeah.
Wow.
All right, the Wednesday, August 21st meeting of the Planning Commission is underway. Joshua, near your seat, can you get a roll call for attendance?
All right, Commissioner Dunwoody.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Davis Jr. Commissioner Hollyfield. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Shear. Commissioner Jones Chance.
Present.
Commissioner Barron.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Very good. A motion would be in order to excuse the absences of Commissioners Smith and Shear.
Removed.
Motion by Brian, support by Phil. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Brings us to the next item on the agenda, the approval of the agenda for this evening. Any comments on this agenda before we move to approve? Motion would be in order to approve the agenda.
Or.
Motion by Michael, support by Phil. All in favor, say aye.
Right.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next up, approval of the minutes from our June 27th meeting as well as our July 17th meeting. Those minutes were included in the packet for review prior to our meeting this evening. Any comments or concerns with the meeting minutes presented? I want to note with those meeting minutes that I do think we have a little bit more valuable comments on some of the some of the discussion that we had in those meetings, and I appreciate seeing that compared to some of the more kind of bare bones, bare bones action and vote oriented minutes that we'd seen earlier. So thanks for that. No other comments. A motion would be in order, we'll vote separately first to approve the June minutes.
Removed.
Or. Motion by Phil, support by Brian. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed. Motion carries. A motion would be in order to approve the July minutes.
Removed. Support.
Motion by Brian, support by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed. That motion carries as well. That brings us to public comment. This is the portion of the Planning Commission meeting set aside for general comment to the Planning Commission on any items for which a public hearing is not scheduled this evening. For note, we will have a public hearing on the electronic message board size requirement as well as a public hearing on the adaptive reuse PUD. With that introduction out of the way, a motion would be in order to open the public comment.
Removed.
Support.
Motion by Michael, support by Brian. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed. Very good. Anybody that wishes to participate in the public comment, feel free to raise your hand in the room or on Zoom, and we will selectively unmute folks.
You have one person on Zoom.
Great. We'll start there. One person on Zoom with a hand.
All right, Maurice, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Feel free to speak whenever you are ready.
I, I, I'm speaking, can you hear me?
I think I'm missing some audio, but we can see his live transcription then.
Oh, we can't hear anything in the room. Give us a minute.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Test one, two, can you hear me? Hello?
All right, I did that with my mind.
Can, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello?
There's that Jesus guy a while back.
Haven't heard him. Where's he from?
Place called Galilee. Somewhere in South America. Jesus, Jesus.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Possibly audio.
Can you hear me? I'm speaking now. Test. Test, test. Can you hear me?
The Speaker, City Council.
Want to try speaking again, doing a test for us?
Yes, can you hear me? Test, test. Can you hear me?
Sorry.
Still can't hear you, but we can see your transcript.
Oh, okay.
Is there a chance that you can get that through your computer? The audio?
Can you hear us, Maurice?
I can hear you. Yes, I can hear you loud and clear.
Perfect. I apologize about that.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, we're just going to stop the echo.
You'd like to go ahead, I think we have you now.
Okay. Good evening, good evening. Everybody can hear me now, right?
We can. Yes.
Good evening. Again, my name is Maurice Jordan, Second Baptist Church. I really have a kind of a cautionary question more than anything else. In a previous meeting, I believe it was Commissioner Marin who raised a question about the constitutionality of limiting the EMB signs to monochrome text only. And I think they, as a result, you had the staff reach out to the city attorney and get his opinion on that question. Currently, John Barr, Mr. Barr, shared his, his advice based on the Reed Gilbert Supreme Court case. And in the memo to this body, Mr. Barr found that the monochrome text only language did not meet the requirements of being content neutral, possibly violating the First Amendment right. So I guess my, my only question to you guys is, is that an oversight that that's still in the, in the text amendment? Or are we ignoring the city attorney's advice? It's my only question for you all. I may not be able to be around later to, to hear your, hear your answer, but I just wanted to put that out there and ask the question to this body. Thank you. That's it.
Wishes to participate.
There's not anybody else.
Very good. A motion would be in order to close the public comment.
Removed.
Motion by Brian, support by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. That brings us to committee reports. Mike, anything that you wanted to share with us from the non-motorized advisory committee?
Yes. So we've had a couple of good meetings in a row, as you saw, we changed our bylaws, working in concert with the Clerk's Office. So still recruiting additional members. We have some new folks on there that are, that are interested. And are, we're kind of thinking about the role of the committee within the city and, and folks that want to participate but aren't necessarily interested in being part of city government, I guess so to speak, pseudo-government. So we do have that going on where we have some volunteers that are going to be helping out, volunteering at EMU to coordinate new students with another community walk bike event along with the new, along the new here on River Drive pathway. We'll also have some tables and volunteers at the Park Ridge Festival this weekend. So if you're available and head on down there, swing by our table and say hello. And then also at the upcoming Fall River Day, which I don't know what that is, but it's exciting. And I think that is kind of it at the moment, so. Any questions?
Questions for our representative on the non-motorized advisory committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the update. For presentations, nothing on the agenda this evening. That will bring us to old business. I'll turn it over to staff for presentation of the electronic message board size requirement.
Yeah, so this is a public hearing, so I don't know if you would want to, you know, open the public hearing first and then pose it, and if we don't have any comments, which I think we might.
I think it might be appropriate for us to get the introduction before we open the public comment.
Okay, yeah, so I am going to go ahead and my screen. So so as we can see, from last, last month's Planning Commission meeting, which I was not here, so I did have to watch the recording. Some of the key points that I wanted to, you know, kind of bring up is that the permanent sign, freestanding, the size of freestanding signs currently at 16 square feet. It was proposed at 24 last month, and the Planning Commission decided to bring that up further to 36 square feet in the core neighborhoods. Planning Commission maintained the 50% number allocated for EMVs. And if the Planning Commission approves of this language, it would then go to council for a second reading. One of the things I did want to bring up because I also went watching the Planning Commission meeting. I did not see anything indicating that, you know, Planning Commission wanted to remove the monochrome text language from the EMB ordinance. So if that's something that you guys want to continue, just let me know.
Sure. Very good. Any questions for staff before we open the public here? Hearing, not a motion would be in order to open the public hearing.
Or.
Motion by Michael, support by Phil. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed. Motion carries. If there's anybody that would like to participate in the public hearing on the electronic message board size requirement now is your opportunity to do so.
Please raise your hand if you would like to make a comment on the EMB ordinance.
There are no hands in the Zoom. A motion of being in order to close the public hearing.
Removed.
Motion by Brian, support by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed. Motion carries. We discussed this a lot in July and in the preceding months, and I don't know that there is a whole lot of value in us jumping into all of the details again. But I would be interested in whether there are any of the changes that other commissioners are interested in discussing. And I think that should start with the comment that we heard about the content neutrality of the monochrome text. This was discussed in part in our July meeting. If I recall correctly, I think Commissioner Smith had the reading of the memorandum from the attorney that that she was under the impression that memo is indicating that restricting the sign to one color and prohibiting images would be unconstitutional relative to the Reed case. It was my understanding from reading the memorandum from the attorney, restricting a sign to one color and prohibiting images would not be content and difficult to justify. I was, I read that to mean that it would not be like content moderation, that it would not be restrictive of any contract, content neutral signage. So I was comfortable with that memorandum proceeding with the language that we have in the ordinance now restricting to monochrome text. That was, I think, in answer to the question that was raised in the public hearing. I don't know if any other commissioners feel differently about the language in that memo or want to revisit the discussion.
I also do want to add, I believe Pittsfield Township has the same requirement in their EMB.
I'm not sure. I know, yeah, I don't know.
I believe Pittsfield Township has the same monochrome text requirement that we are proposing.
I think what's confusing is that memo, or is that sentence in the memo that says, in my opinion, restriction assigned to one color and prohibiting images would not be content and difficult to justify. But I'm wondering if would not is meant to be modifying difficult to justify in addition to the content. So it's like a grammatical error that's totally tripping us up and.
You mean an attorney has written something to understand? Whoa.
Yeah. It's super important.
Lucky our, our resident attorney isn't sitting next to you this evening.
Oh, I wish they were.
If we didn't use the monochrome, what would we use? I mean, we're giving them.
I, yeah, I think the argument there is that if we're restricting imagery, then we are restricting content. Yeah, it is weird grammar in the memo, but I felt comfortable that the intent of the memo was clear that monochrome text is not, not moderating content.
Agreed.
What if you meant to say neutral after content?
Right.
Could have meant a lot of things. Um.
If it's not, if it's not constitutional, then we can change it by decree of the court order.
I, bold, okay. I, I think that I understand from the memo that there aren't concerns about the constitutionality, but I appreciate your boldness in the face of constitutional challenge anyway. With that out of the way, any other updates to the language around electronic message boards that we need to discuss before we?
Yes.
Take a vote.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, and I just.
By all means.
So I thought that we had discussed getting rid of that language about using the existing area, using 50% of what are the existing sign area that's permitted for freestanding building mounted signs as a way to calculate the maximum sign area. I thought was that we had a discussion about and landed on 36 square feet so that we could use that number instead of referencing a percent of whatever the max area is. Wasn't that the whole point? The 50% was meant to apply to the area of the individual sign. Right? If it was a freestanding sign.
I think I was on board until the last bit. What did you mean by 50%?
Um, like if it's a monument sign, then the EMB portion can only be up to 50% of that, that area. That's where the 50% that we landed on came into play, right?
I thought the 50% was in reference to whatever the maximum area was for the district.
But isn't that why this council sent it back to us so that we can do some research and land on a number? So.
Council sent it back because ultimately with the 50% number in the core neighborhood zoning district, you would then only be able to have an eight square foot EMB, you know, I mean, you can still have the 16 square feet of a sign, just only eight, eight square feet can be in EMB.
And isn't that why we recommended changing it? I think I said 36, I meant 32. Isn't, wait, is it 36?
Yeah.
36. Isn't that why we?
Discuss this a lot.
Isn't that why we increased it?
Yes, yeah, so, so the question is whether the 50% limit is intended to apply to limiting the sign of an electronic message board relative to the allowed size of a sign in that district? Or whether we are talking about the area of that sign that is allowed to be used for electronic messaging? Yeah, in our July meeting, and I'll go back to my packet to see if I have good notes on it. I, I would agree that I think, was it 16 feet in, in core neighborhood? It's currently 16 feet. The consensus that I think we were building to in July was to allow a greater area for like an electronic message board sign based on the Michigan Sign Guidebook indications for kind of readable signs from traffic. So what we're talking about here for the amendments to section 122-665C would maximize that area at 50% of the zoning districts maximum area for freestanding or building mounted signs, which would be more restrictive for core neighborhood.
Do we know that, do we know the the maximum in each zone that we're preventing the usage in?
Like the maximum freestanding and building mounted? I mean, like ultimately.
When we say that, it should be no greater than 50% of the zoning district maximum. So that means that each, each district has a maximum limit, right?
Yes.
So in, in saying that, do we? If I asked, if I asked, what was the maximum district in a, in a center?
Freestanding signs aren't permitted, but you can have up to 100 square foot building mounted sign if your building frontage is 100 square feet. If it's like 20, then you can have up to 20 square feet.
So how do 50% look on that?
You could then have a 10, a 10 square foot EMB for it. Like, let's say the building mounted, the building frontage was 20, and you can get a 20 square foot building mounted sign, 10 square feet of that 20 square feet can be an EMB. It really, I mean, and with building mounted signage, it's really, it really depends on the building itself. So, you know, throughout the city, we'll have really large buildings, and then we'll also have buildings that have like 16 feet for their frontage, so. It depends.
Is the monochrome standing, but not to, to exceed the 36?
Well, this, the language as proposed would restrict it to 18 square feet in, in core neighborhood. Right? And that's, that's, I think, where the question of our discussion from the July meeting comes up. So a lot of that discussion was centered around the Michigan Sign Guidebook Table 5-1, which doesn't apply specifically for electronic message board signs. That was included in our July packet. Applied to signs broadly, electronic message board, not electronic message board specific, I should say. That breaks the size range into two categories for rural and urban, and it has three breakdowns of speed of travel, 25, 40, or 55 miles an hour. The I know there was some discussion of 32 square feet. That was, you know, I don't know that, that we have a clear indication of how this applies to electronic message board, but the 40 mile an hour sign in a simple driving environment, as in a rural setting, even though this isn't quite either. I was happy with 32. I wasn't willing to. There's not a significant difference to me between 32 and 36. I'm not worried about quibbling between the additional four square feet, but I'd be comfortable going to 36 square feet for an electronic message board freestanding sign in core neighborhood.
Also, are you saying like 100% of the 36 square feet be the EMB?
Yes.
Same. Yeah, I don't, I don't see why we should make someone get a a 32 or a 36 square foot sign in order to make half of it an EMB, especially if they're not intending to use the rest of the area for anything. Just seems like an unreasonable imposition. It's not really adding any value unless, unless it is, and I just don't know.
And I, I think there was general consensus with that approach in July. Is there any concerns with striking the 50% maximum from the proposed language for section 122-665C?
You mean removing that provision one?
Yes.
Well, then it's not establishing side area requirements at all. We need it.
Well, I guess I'm, the size, the, the sign size requirements would still apply for freestanding signs, which have a maximum area of 36 square feet. I suppose we could be explicit about that. We could say the maximum area for an electronic message board sign shall be no greater than the allowed freestanding sign maximum area by district.
How's that different?
There's no 50%.
I may be looking at the wrong section.
Wait, if there's no, if there's no 50%, then there could be a 36 square foot sign in the, was it the core neighborhoods? Scroll in all of them.
Correct.
Am I on the wrong page?
Rather than 18 square.
Are we, are we all on page 15?
I'm looking at 14.
14.
Okay, let's see.
Yeah, so 15 says it must comply with the requirements of the EMB signs in section 122-650 665.
C, right?
Yeah. And then page 14 has that language from section 122-665.
That's 50% of the zoning district's maximum area for freestanding or building mounted signs, right?
Yeah, what was your concern with 50%?
I like the language as it's written, but I know we had discussed a coverage percent of 50% like of the area of the individual sign that has to be covered by EMB. Like, that was the discussion and we had previously had a percent, well, this was before I was on the question, but the, the percent of the max area within the respective zoning district was what was sent to council and sent back for us to like reexamine. So I was just making sure that this is like.
Not going to come back.
Representative, yeah.
Well, this also does increase the allowed maximum area in corner neighborhood for freestanding sign. So it accomplishes that.
Yes. I think it accomplishes the goals. So make sure it's what we were discussing.
I.
Yeah, shoot.
The, the language in point number one. It says the maximum area is 50% of the zoning district's maximum area for freestanding. It doesn't mean that 50% of the sign, they have to build a bigger sign. They're just saying that if they make an EMB, it's instead of getting 36, they get 18, right?
Yeah.
All right.
And that was discussed, that other provision as well. Yeah. I think it's good we're getting, it's confusing.
At the end though, right? 18 square.
Can you help me out with these? To understand the D1s and D2s?
One's residential and the other's non-residential. Right, Josh, so all the ones that are in the residential uses are not.
D1, it was one, D1 or D2?
D1 is non-residential, D2 would be resident, uh, D1 is residential, D2 is non-residential. So basically, EMVs are not permitted in any residential, for any residential type use. But they are permitted for non-residential uses in some of the district with this proposed language.
Okay, then, help me out. I'm still a little confused on that. Let me, let me say that for example. Let me, let me say that, uh, for example, let me find one here. Can you use R one because both D one, D two represent both? Um, multiple dwellings, let's go to one, two. The core neighborhood one twenty-two, four twenty, one twenty-two dash four forty-two. D one, right?
Yep. That would be residential uses in the core neighborhood.
And it's not permitted, right?
Correct.
Okay, so then when we look at the one twenty-two dash four forty-two, D two, now what's the difference between the D one and D two?
Uh, D two, um, any D two for any of the zoning districts would be non-residential uses. So that could be, you know, a standard retail shop, it could be, medical clinic, you know, just any non-residential use that's allowed in those zoning districts.
I found my note, um, and I was sort of misremembering that July discussion. Cause yeah, with the thirty-two square feet that I was talking about, that's not specific to the electronic message board. So I think we're being generous relative to my reading of that sign guide and, and ending with thirty-six square feet, and I am okay with proceeding with the difference between the maximum sized area for a, a non-electronic sign and the electronic message board sign. Um, sorry, I was sort of back and forth. We've talked about the electronic message boards entirely too much. Uh, anything else that we should settle before we, uh, move to vote on the language presented? Very good hearing. Uh, no further comments. A motion would be in order.
Move to recommend city council approve the proposed text amendment to sections one twenty-two dash four one seven, one twenty-two dash four two two, one twenty-two dash four two seven, one twenty-two dash four two three, four forty-two, four forty-seven, four fifty-two, four sixty-two, six sixty-four, and six sixty-five with the following findings. One, the proposed amendment is consistent with the guiding values of the master plan. Two, the proposed amendment is consistent with the intent of this zoning ordinance. Three, the proposed amendment, uh, will enhance the functionality of transportation network or character of the future development of the city. Four, the proposed amendment will preserve the historic nature of the surrounding area and of the city. Five, the proposed amendment will enhance the natural features and environmental sustainability of the city. Six, the proposed amendment will protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Seven, the proposed amendment will address a community need in physical or economic conditions or development practices. Eight, the proposed amendment will not result in the creation of significant non-conformities in the city. And I so move.
Support. Motion by Brian, support by Phil. Can we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Jones Chance.
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons.
For.
Commissioner Hollyfield.
For.
Commissioner Dunwoody.
For.
Commissioner Marin.
For.
Commissioner Davis Junior.
For.
All right, motion passes.
Very good.
Woo.
Phil comes back.
And, and just to make sure, languages staying the same as proposed.
Correct. Okay. Uh, that brings us to new business. We have a public hearing for the high scope adaptive reuse planned unit development. I'll turn it over again to staff for the presentation.
So, so Highscope, um, is proposing an adaptive reuse P U D for the properties of two oh two, two oh six, and two eighteen East Forest. Um, two oh two and two oh six East Forest will remain as childcare centers, which they have already received their special use approval for back in twenty twenty-two. Two eighteen East Forest is proposed to become a community learning resource center, which is not currently permitted in the core neighborhood, single-family zoning district, hence why they are proposing this adaptive reuse P U D. Um, however, we do have other types of private assembly uses such as, um, churches and, uh, religious um, centers that are permitted in the C N S F district. So this is another form of private assembly, um, just like a religious, uh, institution. Um, further looking into the adaptive reuse, uh, P U D ordinance, um, planning developments are not permitted in the R one C N S F. And parks, neighbor, uh, zoning districts, um, except for provided under section one twenty-two dash seven oh three. Um, this is a unique thing that we have in our ordinance where, um, basically it's a planning development that involves the adaptive reuse of an existing structure that is located in, uh, a residential zoning district, but was originally constructed for non-residential. Per the P U D requirements, even though P U Ds are not permitted, the adaptive reuse P U D still goes through the same review process as a normal you know, for unified control, the applicant is the present owner of two oh two, two oh six, and two eighteen East Forest. Minimum size for, uh, P U D is, uh, half an acre. Uh, all three sites total to one point eight one acres. Um, the, uh, planning commission, uh, city council can grant departures upon recommendation by the planning commission as long as they resolve in a higher quality development that would, um, be, that otherwise would not be possible using the conventional zoning standards. Um, street access, there is street access for the site along East Forest, but there is also additional access, uh, possible from Maple Court. Um, in terms of the usable open space, a lot coverage cannot exceed sixty percent for the house and institutional building types, which are the two building types that we find on this property. The applicant is proposing a thirty-two percent lot coverage. In terms of landscaping and maintenance of common areas, um, the applicant states that they will provide some type of, um, performance bond to show, um, you know, that they will maintain, uh, the common areas and landscaping. Um, and then additional consideration, the site does have numerous non-conformities. However, the applicant has made an attempt to address, um, some of these non-conformities. Um, per the, um, proposal, the applicant is proposing three phases. Um, phase one, um, is, you know, they'll basically be renovating the existing kitchen, meeting dining spaces, uh, restrooms and classrooms. They plan to reconfigure the seating area, um, or the seating on the main level for the, of the previous sanctuary. Um, they plan to improve landscaping on the site, uh, re-stripe the parking lot to further enhance, uh, functionality and flow of that parking lot. Um, they will be replacing a wooden ramp with a concrete ramp to further enhance ADA accessibility. Um, they plan to replace exterior lighting with new L E D fixtures. Um, they want to stabilize the building and they also wanna, uh, repair the elevator. Uh, per phase two, they plan to demolish the south wing of the building. Um, and they wanna place a community vegetable garden where the structure was demolished. Uh, and additionally, they plan to renovate, um, classroom spaces and office spaces. And then with the phase, with phase three, they want to add an additional, approximately two thousand square foot entry slash lobby. Um, at the northwest, uh, corner of the building. Um, they also wanna upgrade the parking lot and access to the site with additional, um, being a stormwater management, and then they wanna renovate, um, the building to complete their long-term visions of the community learning and resource center. In terms of site access, traffic, and parking, um, the site again can be accessed vehically through East Forest and Maple Court. Pedestrian access is possible through East Forest. Um, as well as bike access. The drop-off zone, um, which you can, I don't know if my, you can see the drop-off zone in like the front of the building. Um, it is currently proposed with the re-striping to be blocked off on one end. And so the applicant proposes signage indicating that the drop-off zone is for pedestrian and bike access only. As you can see as well, like along, um, the proposed addition, there is, uh, bike parking that is provided, um, for this site. In terms of, um, the public service areas, uh, basically, um, you know, the applicant will need to get fire department and DPS approval for the proposed plans, uh, for screening landscaping, um, the all, uh, curved islands, like all landscape islands are required to be curved, are curved. Um, they do propose one additional, uh, landscape island because you know there aren't any landscape islands that you found on the site, but they do, um, address this non-conformity with one. Um, and it, it's not curved, so that does have to be curved, uh, for section one twenty-two dash, uh, six four. Um, in terms of the off-street loading, um, the applicant would be required to provide two ten by fifty loading zones. They proposed one loading zone. They didn't, uh, show the size of that loading zone, um, you know, so they would need to, um, confirm the size to ensure that it is at least ten by fifty, uh, but they did request a departure for the, um, one loading zone. Additionally, um, loading zone cannot be located closer than fifty feet within, um, any R one, M D, C N S F, C N, H H S district. Um, unless it's completely enclosed within a building or, um, there's a at least six-foot wall, a masonry wall. Um, there is a loading zone that is proposed within fifty feet, um, of the C N S F without being enclosed. Um, again, they requested a departure. Um, and then in terms of the parking spaces required, per the ordinance, um, when you don't consider the walkable urban districts, uh, like requirement, um, of parking being half, basically, they would need fifty-five, but when you take the walkable urban district consideration, it's then half. And so they would, um, twenty-eight. Currently, the site, I believe, has fifty-one parking spaces. They are proposing fifty-three. Um, again, it's non-compliant and they do request a departure. Uh, in terms of screening and landscaping, the applicant proposes seven new street trees, uh, frontier American elms along East Forest. There currently is only one street tree. So while, um, I don't, I don't believe this brings it fully into conformance, it does address non-complacency and bring it closer into conformity. Um, additionally, the applicant provides some screening, uh, with the landscape island, and they propose another frontier American elm and four meadow suites. Uh, in terms of the trash and dumpsters, uh, basically the ordinance states in section one twenty-two dash six oh eight that the, uh, trash enclosure has to be at least a foot taller than the dumpster with a minimum height of six feet. Um, I don't exactly know what the dumpster height is yet, so the applicant, um, should provide a, a dumpster height details to ensure compliance with this section. Um, in terms of the landscape plan, uh, the applicant did not include any, uh, planting details. Those do need to be included on the landscape plan, but also there are a couple of discrepancies between what's actually on the plans versus what's on the table. So they just need to clean that up. Um, other approvals needed, the applicant will have to, uh, obtain H D C approval for the demolition of the south wing and the expansion of the lobby, but also just any exterior, um, site elements will need H D C approval. Uh, D P S, uh, would like additional information regarding stormwater management. Um, additionally, they will need approval for the street trees from D P S. Um, and then final approval in general, uh, is D P S final approval needed as part of this approval. Uh, the fire department wants to ensure that there are two access pathways on separate planes of the roof, no less than thirty-six inches wide from the gutter to the ridge. Um, if the applicant wishes to have more solar panels, they will need to request a variance from the fire department. The applicant is proposing solar panels on uh, building three, eighteen, um, East Forest, and the fire department wants to ensure that there is that pathway. However, they can go to the fire department to be granted a variant. But overall, final approval from the fire department is required. In terms of the departures requested, um, again, the applicant is requesting, um, a departure from having to have, uh, two loading spaces. They, um, do provide one and staff does recommend approval. Uh, staff, I do not believe that they will need to loading spaces for, um, the site, and so I, I think one is perfectly adequate. Um, additionally, the, uh, loading space being within, uh, fifty feet of the C N S F zoning district, uh, staff does recommend approval of this, um, departure as well. There is, uh, Maple Court that's currently separating, um, you know, the neighboring property and, um, Highscope's proposed P U D. So, and then finally, um, staff does recommend approval of the parking spaces. Um, you know, being proposed with fifty-three, they aren't, they actually aren't increasing the number of, the amount of impervious surface on, for the parking lot with this proposal. They actually are decreasing it. They just happen to re-stripe the parking lot to be more functional. Um, and considering that the, uh, parking lot will be servicing two childcare centers and a community learning center, uh, staff believes that, um, fifty-three parking spaces, you know, would be necessary, uh, especially during, uh, community events that may be happening, and there is no on-street parking for East Forest. So ultimately, staff does recommend, uh, approval of this departure. So, and then this is just the, my recommended, uh, approval motion. Um, this is a public hearing, so at some point I call it public. But, yeah.
Very good. We'll do planning commission, uh, comments or questions to staff for own clarification. We'll look on the applicant speak, and then we'll go to public hearing. Um, I wanna start some of the questions. I have a few points of clarification from your presentation. Um, right off the get, you noted that there are private assembly uses in core neighborhood, single-family. Those are not permitted per the zoning ordinance. Um, just to clarify, your note was that those uses do exist in core neighborhood.
Yeah, like, yeah, like a church, um, can exist, or, you know, a mosque, or like any religious institution can exist in that zoning district.
Yeah, so I guess this is tough because like religious institution and private assembly are different uses in the zoning ordinance, and religious institution is permitted in C N S F. Um, by special use, private assembly is not. Um, and so if we're sort of comparing this to private assembly, um, we would be leaning not on it being an allowed use or a permitted use in C N S F. We would be leaning on us having flexibility to recommend appropriate uses to council as part of the planned, the adaptive reuse P U D. Right? Am I understanding the logic of that correctly?
I don't know if I completely follow. Um, staff has historically, um, recognized religious institutions as private assembly. Um, that was with my conversation with Joe and Andy. Um, so in staff's eyes, this would just be another form of private assembly. Um, you know, but with the adaptive reuse beauty, um, regardless of whether or not it's a religious institution or private assembly, um, the adaptive reuse beauty allows for, if approved by the planning commission and city council, it would allow for this use to exist in the C N S F. Within this, these, uh, this P U D.
Okay. I don't know that I feel good about equating religious institutions and private assembly, given that those have distinct uses that are permitted differently in the zoning ordinance. Um, but I guess the part that I'm coming back to, and this is more just for clarification for the rest of the commission, under, um, the section from planned adaptive reuse projects that's quoted in the packet that includes, um, the language. A planned adaptive reuse project may include any uses determined by the city council upon, upon planning commission recommendation to be appropriate for the site and compatible with adjacent uses in zoning districts. So it gives us flexibility to recognize that if we are, um, adapting an existing building in a residential space that, um, requiring that they only be residential, uh, would be perhaps too restrictive to support any practical reuse of such buildings. So that's how I'm getting there. Just wanted to make sure that, just wanted to make sure that that makes sense or that that is clear, um, especially when we talk about what is or isn't permitted in C N S F. Um, clarification number two for me, and then I'll stop talking. I find myself struggling a little bit with keeping track of which buildings are a part of the P U D. In the language of the packet, we talk about two eighteen, um, being the adaptive reuse, but the other two buildings are included in, I think the, the application, they're included in some of the calculations for, um, you know, coverage or parking or what have you. Uh, we don't really have plans for the other two buildings, right? When it comes to like photometric, we're relying on, on only two eighteen. I'm curious when it comes to considerations for landscaping, parking, street trees, those things. Are your, um, recommendations here based on the site that two eighteen sits on, or is it all three combined?
So for landscaping, it's all three combined as well as, you know, parking. So. So um, yeah, it would be for the entire site.
Is there going to be a requirement that they combine the parcels if we're going to be treating it as one site?
That can be, that can be a condition of approval.
Just wonder if it was discussed.
But nothing's happening at two, 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 six.
They're just childcare centers.
Right.
But they're relying on.
Relying on the parking from two eighteen, um.
And then, and two eighteen's relying on the open space requirements from the other two. So they need to be effectively looked at together.
That can, and yeah, that can be a condition of approval. I'm sorry?
One relies on the other.
Hmm.
So then in saying that, then if we look at it in that case, then we're using a PUD designation for all three.
Yeah, then, then I don't have a problem with using the PUD values for all three. I guess where I was kind of hung up on parts of that is like looking at the photometric plan that covers just two eighteen. Um, you know, we have the floor plans that cover just the larger building. And I think just as a matter of like, what we look at for PUDs, I'm curious. Curious why we would focus on some buildings and not others if it's supposed to be a comprehensive plan. Uh, my third question is getting much more specific. Um, you mentioned the landscape island in your presentation. You said that there were no landscape islands observed. Um, the, the vegetative area that is around the drop-off is, since that is uncurbed, you're not counting that as a landscape island?
Oh, no. Um, I did say that there, I thought I did say there were, because they're proposing one, another landscape island. So there are two. Um, the one that currently exists around the drop zone that is nonconforming. You know, planning commission can require that to be brought into conformance without it being curved. But the proposed uh landscape island, that one's not curved. Um, and per the ordinance, it does need to be curved, and so they would need to address that uh nonconformity because they're proposing it.
I don't know that I understand from the plans where a second landscape island is.
Um, you have the landscape island with the drop-off zone that isn't curved. And then you have the landscape island right, that's closest to East Forest is those two parking spaces that were removed.
I see.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Not really an island.
Yeah, I think that was what I was struggling with. My geography terms. Uh, questions from other commissioners for staff?
I may have some after we, from the applicant.
What phase are they in at just phase one to work?
Maybe doing phase one.
Yeah.
Upon approval, they'd start phase one.
It well, it hasn't been approved yet, so they can't, they can't have started. Um, I have a question procedurally. Do we ask questions directly of the applicant after they do their presentation? Is that how you like to do it?
That is how I would like.
Okay, cool, cool.
Uh, it seems like it might be an appropriate time to hear from the applicant. If you would care to uh just start with your name and share any comments for the commission on the application before us.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, I'm Steph Pinchansky, principal of Daniels and Zermatt Architects. And we've been uh representing High Scope um for several years and are in, on this project. We started working uh probably about five years ago, I think, on a master plan for High Scope. So High Scope is, the property is bigger than just these three parcels. Um, these three parcels are very unique, so, and when we talk about this kind of learning resource kind of hub or complex, it, it includes both these early childcare centers and what was the Baptist church that they acquired in twenty seventeen, I believe. And now have received a million-dollar grant from the state of Michigan to turn it into this community resource center. So that's what is kind of what happened between when they got the special use permit for the two childcare facilities and, and now. Um, and we're on kind of a uh little bit of a timeline from the state to try and get the project in motion. So it's been a little bit of a challenge and Josh has helped us immensely in the process. Um, I also have with me representing High Scope, come introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kamya. I'm a operations project manager at High Scope and I'm representing the organization today.
So I don't, I don't know if everybody knows history of High Scope or whether I should waste any time on that. But uh, it's one of the fabulous institutions that's here in the city of Ypsilanti. And uh, really, I just summarize it as the research that was done in the late sixties here at Perry School created the groundwork for first start, head start program um for young, early childhood education, which has really changed our society. Um, they mostly do research, but have always had a small, um, what would you call a the words escaping me, kind of a lab school for um preschool on the campus. And unlike the Eastern Michigan University Lab School, it's really intended to teach early childhood educators how to implement their curriculum. And it's a play-based curriculum. Um, at least that's my layman's term for it. Um, and anyway, the, you know, a few years ago, there was a, an effort. High Scope does research all over the United States and they wanted to make more of an impact on Washington County. And so a lot of things have gone through. We actually got a um had gone down the path right before the pandemic of renovating parts of this building, the, the, the old church building to turn into a larger preschool. And then high, the COVID hit, there wasn't, you know, the, the demand. Um, and that kind of went on the back burner. And then there was some change in leadership and uh the direction changed a little bit. This grant came about. So that's a little bit of history. We actually had a building permit to do that renovation before um COVID. The um, and it's a, you know, it's a great building. Um, it has good bones. But of course, it's, needs a lot of money to invest into it. And so this million dollars is not going to go very far, but it's gonna be the first step, the first phase in this process. Um, there's a few things, I'll, I'll just, a few things I jotted down. Uh, that the landscape island is intended to be curbed, the new one proposed. We wouldn't do anything new that wasn't done properly. Um, there was also something about parking blocks. There's kind of these quasi parking blocks on the west side. They're almost like concrete blocks that have been embedded into them, into the asphalt. Um, so wherever possible, we're adding new parking blocks where it makes sense. Um, fire department, I did talk to the fire marshal about um his concern about the solar panels and assured him, yes, we're gonna put solar panels. We hope to put them on the flat part of the roof, which is the uh, the educational addition to the building, previous education of the building when it was Baptist church. Um, that's the easiest place to locate them and I assured him we'll make sure he has ample access. Um, loading, so that loading zone, yeah, it's not quite fifty feet. Um, it's about thirty feet where we're placing it, trying to get it as far as we can. Um, there, um, on the floor plans for the other uh houses that are, have been converted into, into preschool, we actually at least have one of them, I think. Um, and uh meant to include those, but that escaped us, so um, we can try and do that. Um, but of course, the, the, the main building, the two eighteen building is the most complicated. Um, and uh, actually has, you know, as I mentioned, has pretty good bones and good fire separations in it. And I went through some of that with the fire marshal as well in my conversations with him. Um, specific questions? I can go into more detail about the grant. There's, I included it a lot of the, the, in that narrative. Um, in terms of, you know, community benefits, all the programs there are for um kind of uh free, free uh, you know, early preschool, basically. Um, and uh, so hopefully, there's a lot of information in that packet on the narrative. Um, there was a lot of research done before the grant was, was um created, proposed. Um, and obviously, the state thought it was worthy.
Michelle, do you want to get a start?
Sure. Um, thank you. This is my neighborhood, so I actually walked my dog there this morning and he's got the beagle nose, so we took our time, walked around it. Um, I'm hoping you can speak a little bit more to the community benefits. I mean, obviously, you know, early childhood education has a great value, but I'm wondering how that will be targeted to this specific community. Um, and.
I don't know if you can talk to the early childhood education. I can talk a little bit more about kind of the community. Cause there's two pieces.
Right.
Like there's the early childhood, which really is in the two houses and is, is been established and is gonna kind of, we hope grow. Then there's the kind of more community resource center, which is really targeted more for adults. But I'll let you go ahead and talk about.
So I think for the early childhood, there's been talk about, um, to the earlier point, the two childcare facilities are basically demonstration classrooms. And there's been talk about doing further demonstration classrooms and using that as a way to um show our curriculum and how it is used in practice, but also allowing other educators to come and visit and see how we put it into practice, basically using as more for training and things to further elevate early education.
In terms of the community benefit, though, the, the key is, I know the research that was done prior to the pandemic was looking at all the early childcare centers that were available in the county, whether there really was a need. And at that time, I know the research showed that there was, and we were targeting some significant numbers, like a hundred kids uh over time. Uh, I'm not sure post-pandemic if those numbers have really been updated. Uh, so that was the need for locally. Uh, and I think some other centers have come online since the pandemic. So where that number is right now, I'm not sure exactly, but that I think is one large benefit. The other benefit is the, this is a kind of state-of-the-art early childcare center we're talking about. Some of the best centers around use the High Scope curriculum. Um, so this is kind of like getting right at the root. We have this great gem of a institution in our community and being able to actually benefit the kids in the community.
Can I interrupt real quick and ask that you just aim the mic at, at you?
I'm so sorry. Um, Gretchen's house is uh kind of, they, they were started in Ann Arbor, um, have expanded beyond that. And just exemplary, and even when we did the master planning for High Scope and I've done some other planning for other really high-quality early childhood education centers in the, in the community. Um, they all kind of look at some of the models of High Scope's buildings that they've built and their kind of how they've, their, their model. Um, so even when we were doing the master planning with High Scope, five years ago, we went and visited some of the Gretchen's house, some of the University of Michigan, EMU um facilities. So that's kind of addressing the early childhood center. Um, the objective of the two eighteen building, the old church, um, there was a commercial kitchen in that building that's kind of needs to be upgraded. The idea is to be able to provide some food service, to provide some educational space for adults, whether it is continuing education. Um, you know, resources with um associated community organizations that might be providing services to people in need. Um, that's kind of the model for that building. Did it be not your traditional community center, but really a resource and learning center? Um, so kind of expanding that idea of a community center a little bit further um and really making it a resource for the community, um, mostly for, you know, people in need. But there's also the ability that they could have, you know, seminars in the, the sanctuary. Uh, the idea there is to remove every other pew and create some, almost like seminar tables so that you'd have more flexible space and you could, could be more of a learning um center than just a sanctuary.
I'm wondering if the reason, you know, you can reduce the parking spaces to what it currently has, because it's a walkable area. I'm sure I'm using the wrong terms. Um, and I'm wondering if you want to have more parking because you expect this to be a regional draw more than a community sort of base, or if, or because it's already paved and it's easier to just restripe?
Well, I, I think it's, it is a concern that if I did the, there's a lot of flexibility in the zoning ordinance. You know, when you have this mixed-use building that has these different uses, how do you calculate the amount of parking? And um, you know, depending on what I figure for that sanctuary space, I can come up with any number. Honestly, I can come up with a hundred parking spaces. I can come up with fifty. Um, but we do a lot of public library work is kind of our niche. Um, and we find all kinds of different zoning ordinances that have everything from, you know, uh, one space for a hundred and fifty to one to a thousand for public libraries. And we've kind of over the years found, well, the right spot is kind of like one to four fifty or five hundred. Um, because when you have a big, if you have a big meeting room and there's a hot topic and, you know, two hundred people show up for the meeting, um, you know, there, even if there's two or three people in each car, you need some space. Um, and so the idea is that we, we hope that there's gonna be quite a range of activities and we may not need that parking every day. But when um there is a, a big draw and a big, whether it's a community meeting or um there's a great speaker that they're able to host at that location um that we will get more of a, when you say regional, I don't think of necessarily outside Washington County. But maybe you could get, you know, people driving in from Ann Arbor, or at least where they're not walking.
Sure. Um, I have a few more questions. Do you all mind?
Have it.
Um, so I see High Scope also owns two nineteen Oak Street, the property of South, and the parking is effectively connected. I mean.
That is a, the, that's kind of their parking for the rest of their, so the total, before the pandemic, I think there was a total of fifty staff on site. Is that correct?
Probably more.
And it was probably more.
Yeah.
Um, kind of outside of the child, childcare, but of the research staff. So there's about thirty staff in the Hutchins house. That's their headquarters building. Um, and there's only about six parking spaces there, five parking spaces, few of them are, I think there's one handicaps about, bear free. Um, the, and then there, I think we're about nine researchers in the two nineteen building, if I remember right. Um, so most of the parking for that whole campus staff was at the two nineteen, behind the two nineteen house. Um, the, I'm not sure that they're using all of that right now, you know, still, they're still kind of hybrid, right? In terms of how many staff are.
Why isn't it part of the PUD?
Um, well, we, we thought as, that being part of the research, um, part, you know, the primary research part of High Scope, that that really wasn't part of this learning resource, community or, or campus. Um, that, you know, at some point in the future, they may decide they're gonna bring all the research into. they're gonna bring all the research into, say, this large building at 218, and they may want to sell off that house as bringing back to residential.
Sure. Completely understand. My concern is those two parking lots, I mean, they're in just, if you're, when you're driving there, I also drove through today, on my way home from work. It's, it feels as one parking lot. And so I have concerns about approving a PUD for one parcel and not the other. When effectively it is part of the same project. And then also, no, I'm veering off. Yes.
The his, history, when the church was stolen by the church, was Highscope actually rented some of the church spaces because they didn't have enough space in that lot behind 219. Again, that was before the pandemic, when everybody was coming to the site. I'm not sure how many of the Highscope staff are in the neighborhood or in a walkable distance. As I said, mostly researchers and there's a lot of publishing as well that goes on. So Highscope publishes a lot of documents on their curriculum and this. So that's, you know, all I know right now. I think that's, you know, I think the objective will be, I mean, Highscope's very concerned about sustainability. The, the master plan was to eliminate the parking lot basically next to the church, the 218 parking lot eventually, and turn that all into green space. That was the master plan five years ago. We haven't updated that with current administration, so I can't really speak that that would still be the case, but that was kind of the long-term approach, but the master plan also then included creating some parking closer to Hutchins behind one of the other houses that they own. So it was really just shifting it more, but connecting kind of these three parcels that we're talking about and making there more green space for the kids. Less like you're going out into a parking lot. And, and distributing that parking more toward, if there's thirty people in the Hutchins house, that there be thirty parking spaces. You know, or some quantity, twenty or something closer to the Hutchins house. So that is kind of the long-range plan. It doesn't really, I'm, I can't say it really is, you know, affects this PUD. But hopefully, we get back to that master plan eventually.
I hear you. I, it, since it is effectively one parking area, if we're counting those spaces, then it doesn't have the appropriate number of ADA spots. So I mean, I get why you don't want to include in the PUD because right now you don't need to, but I'm just kind of thinking about how this will play out. I have a question. Maple Court. Is access intent, is normal access intended to be from Maple Court? Or, or is there going to be any, like, operational attempt?
Dirt?
Oh, yeah, I know. It's gravel. Yeah. Well, my concern is because when you drive in the one and only access point, you drive right into those barrier free spaces.
That's why we're moving those. Yeah.
Well, I'm looking at your site plan. And so you have to turn to get your, it's not aligned with the drive aisle.
Right, correct. And right now, we're actually improving it. Right now, the ADA spaces are totally in front of that quasi-island.
Yeah.
Right? So there's like only about thirty feet to, to turn. And, and people still do it, but I think nobody parks in those ADA spaces. So we're shifting that all down so that it is, it does have proper turning movements.
Right. I get that, but I'm just thinking when people come in, if it's, if it's, if that's the entry point and people don't want to deal with traffic conflicts at that narrow driveway apron, then they're going to try to bail out Maple Court and there's no wheel blocks preventing them, wheel stops, wheel blocks, whatever the term is, preventing them from driving right in there. And I know this because I did this two hours ago.
Yeah, and it is part of the fire truck access route and the dumpster truck access route. So I think the access to Maple Court is a feature here that you're just concerned about.
Passenger traffic, passenger vehicle traffic. Yeah, because, just because that access, the one and only access point, the intended access point is narrow and boom, you're immediately into traffic or into all the parking spaces. It just seems to me like if I was trying to leave, I wouldn't want to combat all of that incoming traffic. I'd try to take my egress elsewhere.
I mean, I think, you know, looking at it, it is, it meets specifications in terms of the width.
What is the width?
That's twenty-six feet.
Of the, of the drive aisles, the new drive aisles?
Yeah. And the, well, the new drive aisle, I think is twenty-four, but I think the curb cut itself is twenty-six.
That was my question.
Yeah. So it, we did look at that. In a perfect world, yes, I'd like to align that. That is part of phase, I can't remember if it's part of phase two or phase three. Or, you know, at this point. But when we have the funds to redo the parking lot, that will get realigned. That's why we actually didn't want to plant a street tree where it would have to be cut down in a few years. When we realign that, that parking effect, that one still looks a little closer. So that, but all that did go into consideration. If, if you'd feel more comfortable, say, right now, there is that quasi-island that doesn't have any curbing. You know, at, if you'd feel more comfortable with that by creating kind of even a triangular island there, so it guides people without just striping on the pavement. That would kind of make you feel like, okay, that's, now you're getting a little more guidance in terms of how you should be trapped, you know? And, and of course, we can do something with pay, lines on the pavement as well. That could be done pretty easily. There's one other thing I kind of don't know that I mentioned in terms of there was, you know, some concern about this drop-off, the old drop-off from, from the, the church. And one, one of the thoughts there is to be able to use that asphalt area for outdoor programming. Let's say we pitched a tent for a, a special event or something like that. So we were gonna try and and make sure we're restricting flow in there that isn't, there's no confusion about that with some striping, which doesn't seem to be showing up on this plan, which I thought we had.
We're being in wheel stops there, correct?
Yeah, or, or even putting the bike, you know, things that we're showing the bikes locations down here, which I thought we had further up. But anyway, but those are very flexible. Just to make it real clear, but still, oh, I do recall why we ended up moving the bike hoops down there to the ability, if we were setting up a tent, that somebody could back up a truck to unload a tent. But I do hear your concern and I had a similar concern.
Let me jump in here real quick regarding that concern. You mentioned something about wheel stops to prevent some of that, that pedestrian traffic out Maple Court. And I was curious, are you are you proposing wheel stops that aren't shown on the site plan, something to restrict that? Or is your concern that there isn't anything that would restrict it now? I, I guess, let me, let me be more direct, right? We know that it's a feature because it is needed for the dumpster and for fire truck access. So what, what is your, what is your notion about what could or, or should change here to improve traffic flow?
Well, I think having wheel stops along the parking spaces that do front Maple Court would provide visual cues to, to drivers that this is the end of the parking lot. You're not meant to just peel out over over these spaces. And I do really like this project. So, and I mean, the Highscope property on North River is gorgeous. The ground.
You're concerned about the parking is behind 219, where the wheel stops, the parking is right up against Maple Court?
Well, the ones at 219 already have wheel stops. I know it's not within the scope of this project.
Right. Yeah. So we don't have any parking spots up against Maple Court. The
Oh, I see, yeah.
That's the loading zone back there?
Right, right.
And which is really just, there's a sea of asphalt there that then turns into the, the gravel of Maple Court. And there, you know, we could, I mean, I, I kind of like it from a standpoint of, I, it makes it a lot easier if you're bringing in us you know, food service truck to, to load in terms of having that asphalt all the way out. Because I'd prefer that, you know, the, if there's a small semi that's delivering food for an event, that it's not coming through the parking lot. It's coming through the, the alley. So I think that's actually one of the benefits in terms of this, you know, being in a residential district, but without, there's still like the service of an alley. So you don't have.
You don't want to restrict that movement, right?
Right, right. Which, you know, we'd never really like having some eyes coming through a parking lot with kids.
Did you talk to the, the neighbors at three oh four East Forest and three oh five Oak?
I don't know if Highscope has approached the neighbors. Do you know if the gentleman had? I think she had talked about it, but I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm surprised there's not more people here. I mean, they got the notice. So I'm, right? Yeah.
I think in general, Highscope has been a very good neighbor for a long time and has good communication with the neighbors.
This property got real blighted real quick. I swear they just paved it like, not even five years ago. And now it's already like, I mean, the asphalt, it's asphalt. So it's falling apart. Somebody else asked questions.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just for me, because I'm, I'm, I'm just loving the project anyway, and I'm like a Highscope supporter. But just for me, I would just like to go through these non-conformities.
I was planning on doing that perhaps after the public hearing. We can go into those more point by point, unless there was something that you needed from the applicant on it.
One thing I could address in terms of the landscaping, we, you know, landscaping plan, and I, sorry, Josh, if our the coordination between the plan and the, and the chart didn't quite work out, but the concept was to look at, you know, overall, the parcels, there's obviously a lot of older growth on behind the other two houses. And just trying to kind of show that it's a pretty vegetated site in general. And bolstering kind of what I thought were the important things, which were, were buffers from the street. So having that island at the north end, removing two parking spaces there and creating some a little, some more shrubs kind of along that sidewalk there that's in the front setback to again, try and screen a little more of the parking to make it a little more friendly to the residential and of course, then the street trees. And to me, that was biggest bang for the buck.
Perhaps it's time to open the public hearing. I appreciate your input. I will let you know if we have other questions. A motion would be in order to open the public hearing.
Moved.
Motion by Brian, support by Michael. All in favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Is there anybody that has joined us that would like to comment on the application for the adaptive reuse PUD?
There's nobody on Zoom.
Catching up on my note anyway, so give me a second. Okay, not seeing any hands. A motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
Moved.
Motion by Brian, support by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Let's jump right into some of the proposed, let me get to this list. I think it would be useful, as with kind of our, our habit for PUDs, for us to talk about the departures individually. Just to, to give some more attention to those before we move forward to kind of consideration of any other specifics. So there are four included in the presentation here. Those start with the off-street loading space requirements and then off-street loading space dimensions. Staff recommends approval. I tend to agree here that for the use proposed meeting, you know, greater number of loading space requirements feels unnecessary. Anybody on the commission that wishes to discuss that further?
I agree. And perhaps that standard's even too high.
Yeah, it is weird. We talked about the use a little bit, right? And it's, it's, it's tough to figure out how to talk about this use in terms of zoning ordinance language, because it's like not quite education and it's not quite childcare and it's not quite private assembly, but a combination of all of those things. And then, you know, more at times. Yeah, sounds like a PUD. Yeah. And so talking about that in terms of uses, like there are for a site this size and a building this size, I can see why there might be loading requirements for other uses in this sort of facility. But yeah, I agree that it doesn't make sense for this one. The other, did I say four departures? Sorry, we only have the three, the, the third and final departure there, minimum, maximum number of parking spaces. So I think it's compelling that there is an existing parking lot here. Right? We have a maximum for walkable urban districts that would require a deviation here or a departure for a community center where we are talking about having a gathering space for the community. I find myself forgiving of having more parking spaces than, you know, the minimum would require. I think it's helpful here if there are plans for future phases with parking to revamp what's going on with the parking lot, that it doesn't feel like there's a whole lot of value in us trying to, you know, drive any, any kind of reconstruction of the parking lot as part of this phase. That doesn't feel like it adds anything to me.
So there's the requirement for the PUD to have usable open space. And I was already talking about this with Josh about what that means because it's not defined in the zoning ordinance. But and I solicited a lot of the opinions on this today, it does not include parking.
Right.
And completely get like, they would be, the spaces would be used, they're already there. But it is a sea of impervious surface and it's like much less open space than is typically allowed by other types of dimensional standards within the zoning district. And because the, the proposed landscaping is kind of well, slim, I would say that it's not achieving that open space requirement of a PUD. And it's exchanging that for extra parking that it doesn't, by the terms of the ordinance, need. And so that's my qualm.
Yeah, it is interesting that they talk about open space and not green space. Because I think talking about opening space without talking about, or sorry, open space without talking about green space is not very helpful.
Well, like, you know, Corner Brewery has the patio with all the tables and that's open space, activated public space. But without a definition ordinance, it's like really hard to apply this requirement of the PUD.
Yeah.
So we kind of have to use our planning commissioner discretion here. And that's just my two cents.
Yeah. Understood. Yeah. And, and the, even if we do have open space, that open space not being green space or, or just being, you know, impervious parking lot, I think is not ideal for the site. I, I would have a hard time, I would have a hard time using planning commission discretion, using my discretion to require more green space here when that parking lot is connected to drive paths and parking from adjacent sites. That is keep being reduced with at least some landscape island or peninsula and is being blocked off for something of an outdoor gathering space. To me, that feels like an improvement on an existing condition. That I think makes me comfortable with the stricter requirements of the PUD. I can see why you might argue for more. I think to me, it just feels like with the site, we have any additional green space kind of hurts the connectivity of this parking to the rest of the complex, right? And I, I know that's, I know that's tough. I know that's not a compelling argument because the rest of the complex isn't necessarily a part of this PUD. But I'm thinking just in practical terms.
I, I could count the spaces that are along that western edge of the 218 East Forest property. Maybe the applicant knows off the top of their head. That southern building. So Josh, procedural question. We're approving this PUD. We're approving the site plan for phase one as well.
Yes, phase one only.
He's, well, they proposed the uh, three phases. Um, the phases could be built into um, the PUD agreement.
Right.
So I mean, initially, like it would be phase one that's being approved, but it's the phasing itself that I figured would be built into their PUD agreement, which, you know, would then go through council review.
Because if there's a commune garden, that's a game changer.
Yeah, that's tough though, right? Because like, there are timeline requirements for the PUD that would compel two and phase three to get built, right? How long does it take a PUD to expire?
For, well, I don't think the PUD really has an expiration. I think it's more the site plan is within the PUD that has an expiration. Um, if you don't pull any, pull any building permits, then the expiration is after a year. If you pull building permits, but there is no um, work being done, then it's two years of no work being done, you know, so you have to approve. And then this site plan would expire. But again, there could be flexibility built into um, the PUD agreement.
The reason I brought up the parking spaces along that property line are it's not compliant with the landscape island requirements.
Yeah.
So.
Which it already is that.
Right. Right. Surely we could, but if there's already concerns, at least that I have about the amount of open space, then requiring some landscape islands would be one way to address that. Although you could also say how valuable are landscape islands in general? Planning philosophy question for everyone.
From the zoning ordinance, uh, approval of the planned unit development must expire and be of no effect unless construction must have commenced within one year of the date of the approval. And so that is tough because if they, if we talk about construction of phase one, that's achievable. If we talk about construction of phases two or three, we might be putting an unnecessary burden on phases two and three to to start construction or expire if those are included in the PUD. Question for the applicant, is it the intent here for this PUD to include phase one or to include phases one, two, and three? Including phases one, two, and three feels like a risk because of some of the timeline things for construction to have to start.
We don't have site plans for phases two and three.
We kind of do.
They're not complete. So I I don't know how we could take action on that on phases two and three anyway.
In the the site plan and the layouts show the phase one building shape, but the proposed site plan, as I'm on sheet twenty-five of our packet, does show the building profile for phase three, the front lobby addition. And uh, it it calls out the specific section that would be removed as part of phase two. Um, so I think the packet isn't complete in showing phases one, two, and three on every drawing. But I think in terms of the site layout, we have it. Um, the other bit I was going to mention from that, the zoning ordinance text is that um, there might have to be some procedural clarification about what the timeline looks like. Cause you know, it's not, it's not up to planning commission to enforce that. And so I don't want to put you in a bind where we approve phases two and three. It feels like worst case scenario here, um, reading from the zoning ordinance in the event an approved planned unit development has expired. Nope, sorry, I jumped ahead. Uh, quoting from the zoning ordinance again, "An extension for a specified period may be granted by the city council upon good cause shown if such request is made to the city council prior to the expiration period." Um, so I don't want to spend too much time talking about the phase two and three. Uh, but I want to note for potential staff follow-up um, with the applicant that in the event that we look into this procedural enforcement requirements tied to that timeline, worst case scenario here is I think there's a city council request for extensions along the way.
Josh, I have a question. Do two oh two and two oh six forest each have individual special use permits?
Yes. Oh, well, no, actually, I believe they were approved at the same planning commission.
Okay, so they they have, but each property has them. And is any activity that's going on in either of those changing with this?
No, as far as I'm aware, no.
Why are they part of this PUD?
It was for uh, the opens uh, space requirement in the landscaping or the landscaping requirement.
And it shares parking.
And they, yeah, they do share parking.
Oh, yes.
So all of the uh, parking for two oh two and two oh six is serviced by two eighteen.
Lot combination would definitely have to be required.
It's tough because it it's, I don't know that there's a right answer to including two oh two forest, two oh six forest, or was it two nineteen on Oak?
Yeah.
Like, including some of those and not others, um, it feels like there's a case to be made for any combination of those.
And two nineteen Oak is being used as, I mean, the structure is being used as a single-family residence right now or researchers, okay? Does that have a special use permit? Interesting.
I think it's an existing nonconforming.
Uh, I'm interested in thoughts of other commissioners on the parking uh, parking departure.
I mean, it seems like a lot of parking to me, but I just, you know, that's, that's always going to be my my opinion.
I guess, so I'm I'm more forgiving of parking when it's existing, right? I I am, I think a lot of the zoning ordinance is shaped towards being accommodating to adaptive reuse, right? And this feels to me like a reasonable accommodation for an adaptive reuse.
Yeah, paradise has already been paved.
Right, yeah. Um, if there aren't any other thoughts on the approved departures or sorry, on the recommended departures, I should be careful about the language I'm using there. Um, I think it might be beneficial for us to talk about a few of the other existing nonconformities, right? With planning commission having the discretion to to require some of those conform, nonconformities to be brought into compliance as part of the, as part of our approval here. Um, should we grant it? So I wanted to talk about a couple of those things. You know, there's a few in here, so you can can hopefully kind of run through a couple of them. I want to start with the site lighting. Um, that's showing up on page forty-six of our packet. Uh, it is noted that there is a nonconforming fixture that is twenty-five feet in height. I'm not terribly concerned about that, given that that fixture is shielded from any residential uses by the buildings that are a part of this PUD. Does anybody have any thoughts on the that existing nonconformity?
Where where's that? Is that a building mounted or pole mounted?
Pole mounted.
Pole mounted in the middle of the.
Oh, landscape island, okay.
Yeah, so that is taller than the ordinance would allow.
Yeah, uh, ordinance allows for sixteen feet in height. I forgot I accidentally put a hundred and sixty. It's sixteen, I promise.
I was going to look up the part in the in the zoning ordinance text that that got copied from. But yeah, so it shouldn't be taller than sixteen feet. Again, to me, there's a pole there. It is shielded from neighboring uses. Um, that doesn't feel like a nonconformity that presents any issue.
And the same fixture is going to be used or just the pole?
Uh, I believe the um, the light itself is being switched out to an LED, but the pole will be, will remain.
Um, the next item that is noted for discussion is the fire department and DPS approval that the applicant already commented on. Um, skipping ahead to page forty-nine here, we have an existing nonconformity in setback from the adjacent lot. Staff has noted that the parking lot at two eighteen uh, East Forest directly above the adjacent lot, two oh six East Forest within ten feet of the western lot line. Um, since these are functionally a shared use across the lot line um, for two oh six East Forest, I'm not very concerned with the parking situation, right? Because this parking lot essentially serves two oh six East Forest, so the proximity there doesn't feel like a problem.
Yeah, if they combine lots, it definitely won't be a problem. And to, sorry, to jump back to the light thing, I wouldn't have a problem with it being that tall if we did make some type of requirement on the color temperature. Cause it is, I mean, that's, even if it's shielded, it's high enough to be a visual nuisance. I don't, I mean, they're switching out the bulb anyway. I don't think, it'll be hard to find a low color temperature bulb. Just a thought.
Like, what's the difference in measurement that someone would put in a sixteen?
I'm I'm imagining if a pole is twenty-five feet up in the air.
Yeah.
Then the lighting spreads more.
It spreads more, yeah.
If the pole is lower, then it spreads less.
Yes.
So that's my thinking. So with it, with us remaining at that twenty-five, would that cause a problem as far as the line that they use is in, in regards to interference of a neighborhood?
Well, the a photometric plan um, did show that it does not exceed the foot handleage at the property line. And so that should not be an issue, but you know, like Michelle suggested, um, we could, our planning commission could uh, require a lower temperature uh, bulb to um, address any of the lighting concerns.
Both of those things are within our authority to require as part of the approval here. Um, it's just a question of what we think is necessary or.
I mean, I think if it's currently proper at the lot line, I I don't see why we would make an additional requirement.
I would tend to agree with that.
For illumination, but that's not the only way that lights can cause a nuisance. It's just the only one that's regulated in our zoning ordinance.
Right. Thanks. Uh, yeah, and I will, I will let you know if we have further questions uh, in the future. Anything else that we need to discuss for color temperature?
When whenever we have the opportunity to choose the lower comfort temp, other temperature, we should, so. Avoiding a three thousand K Kelvin. Unless you don't care about the humans that are interacting with the environment.
Still feeling bold, huh? Yeah, I I think I have a a problem with our zoning ordinance not talking about the temperature that doesn't feel like it's relevant to the site plan. That's kind of where I land on. I'm happy to to entertain the discussion about lighting temperature, but um, I have a hard time with applying that discussion to two eighteen East Forest and and nothing else in the city.
It's a PUD though.
Yeah, it is. Um, yeah.
It's a deviation of, what is the limit now, sixteen feet? So if it's going nine feet higher.
I asked for the lighting ordinance to be changed six and a half years ago when I joined the commission. So I don't think it's a just because it hasn't happened in the city yet, doesn't mean that it's not good, couldn't not enter our zoning code.
Yeah, I, be that as it may. Um, where I stand on that is that the this difference on this site in this location between a sixteen-foot pole and a twenty-five-foot pole um, is is not enough for me, for us to address lighting temperature in a way that we don't address on other sites. Is there?
What was that?
Can't hear you over here.
Yeah.
I think, I think pretty much as far as the lighting is concerned, there's an overall agreement that how it stands is is what we want to run with.
Oh, I don't think so. Right? I'd like to regulate color temperature. I think Mike does as well.
Not finding consensus on that. Um, let's, let's talk about wheel stops, um, because I I think I think there are other parts of the site plan that it is worth discussing. Uh, still on page forty-nine of the packet, there is an existing nonconformity with parking spots not containing wheel stops. Um, we have wheel stops that are proposed for just the spaces in front of the the drop-off area. In the ordinance, as it's written, wheel stops should be provided for all parking spaces to prevent vehicles from projecting beyond the parking lot area, bumping any wall or fence or encroaching on landscaping. That walking area and um, bumping any wall or fence feels like it is a concern in other parts of the parking lot. Um, I would be inclined to condition that the wheel stops be added to the site plan for that to be brought into conformity. Uh, any feelings from other commissioners?
I agree.
I agree.
Pardon?
Just saying at one side, I remember there was some mention of uh, part of this being turned back into a grass landscaped area. Is this the section abouting this area?
That's the area that says phase two, there's the building there currently.
Okay, so I am backwards or sideways.
Where are you going with that? Um, Commissioner Chance?
I was just wondering if it would really made a difference anyway.
The wheel stops?
Yeah, just based on the future plans, but I think I'm, I got a little mixed up here.
Okay.
So two, yeah, two oh six and two eighteen, and just making sure I'm looking at this on the uh, and two eighteen, and just making sure I'm looking at this on the uh, on the site correctly. I guess it doesn't matter. I mean, it's wheel stops.
Here, or it's like six to eight, right?
Pardon?
How how many additional wheel stops?
Let's count.
Well, not 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 even additional. How many are are we looking at?
Yeah, so this is um, wheel stops shall be provided for all parking spaces. If in any parking lots containing five or more spaces, that is the way the ordinance is written. Um, this is an existing nonconformity. We can litigate which parking spots need the wheel stops. But for me, if we're talking wheel stops, I think we just bring that up to code. That's kind of where my head's at.
What was the aim of um, allowing this nonconformity? It seems like pretty low stakes.
I mean, at the end of the day, like the ordinance allows for nonconformities to exist as long, uh, as long as the planning commission approves of it. If the planning commission does, wants to bring in the conformance, that is the power of the planning commission.
Wheel stops adjacent to a building feel like enough of a safety thing for me. All right, I'm gonna move along.
I'm good with that, too.
Uh, I'm at screening and landscaping. That starts uh, on page fifty of the packet. We have an existing nonconformity with the street trees. We are adding street trees to the lot. But um, seven internal lot street trees as opposed to the what would be um, one per eight spaces that would require. Will we round up? Is seven the required number? Uh, it was like.
I think eight is a one tree per eight spaces.
It was like six point something, and so I think it was just rounding up to.
Oh, so the the street trees are not a nonconformity.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the um.
Oh, yeah, sorry, not street. The one tree per eight space requirement.
Yeah, that gives you six point six two, so I rounded it up to seven.
That's general site landscaping trees.
I believe that's just for the parking lot.
But I mean, like, true, it's not in landscape islands. It's.
Yeah, yeah, it's um, basically like, yeah, it's basically for the number of parking spaces that you have. It's not landscape island tree requirements. It's just like, you have this many parking spaces, you need to plant these additional trees.
Anywhere on the site?
Yes.
And they're only proposing seven, and you're saying that the requirement is eight? What is this?
The requirement is seven, and I think we have proposed. I don't think we have proposed any that are not either the landscape island tree or the street tree. There is the one existing tree to the front of uh, the building at two eighteen and then existing. I keep saying street tree, sorry. And then the existing landscape trees behind two oh two and two oh six.
And then part of that was because they're gonna make another change in the later phase that would require one of those in the space where it actually could go to be cut down anyway. Right?
Yeah, that was part of it. Um, I think the question is also just where on this site plan do additional trees go? I guess I have part of the, part of the problem is like, this is just landscaping trees, and there are plenty of existing behind two of two and two oh six.
Okay, so the requirement is stated on page two twelve of the zoning ordinance, if anybody wants to pull it up. And it has a visualization of where these trees can go, because it's not anywhere on the site. So the ones behind those two properties that are already established, those can't count towards this. So that's why it's noncompliant, because it has to be like.
Oh, so this is internal to the parking?
Yes, or, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay, so let's talk about the islands then. Um, the existing nonconformity for the islands. There are two proposed, or or rather, one and a peninsula. I think that should be curbed. It doesn't sound like that's going to be a problem. I suppose the question then, um, because the the landscape, the parking peninsula has a a tree proposed on it, the existing landscape island does not have um, anything proposed on it. It has the light at the moment. Suppose there's a possibility that we require a tree on that landscape island, but I don't think you can not make an exception to the first one unless you make an exception to landscape islands elsewhere. And I'm inclined to make an exception to landscape islands elsewhere.
As in that second box.
Yeah, like I I don't think that there is value in requiring more landscape islands.
I think there is. Where would they go? Within the parking spaces that they have in excess.
But doesn't that take away from the parking spaces?
Right, but they have excess.
Yeah.
And they actually need a deviation from that as well.
Uh, yeah, I think that the proposal is that the parking spaces be reduced, which would bring this more into compliance. And a landscape island is added, which would bring this more into compliance. Is it what? Which part? Yeah, there is an improvement of one landscape island, but it is still short of the, it would be too short in this scenario.
Like landscape islands? I think it would actually be uh, I think it might be three or four, sure.
One for each sixteen spaces, right? And I think we round up with landscape islands, so we would be at four, and there are two provided.
I would, I mean, I, I I think for my part, um, given that this isn't like a a shopping center or something where there is like a designated area of probably high pedestrian traffic. I don't necessarily see, or at least not from a safety aspect. A need to make an improvement on the is existing site by way of additional landscape islands. But you know, I'm I'm open to other opinions on that.
Yeah, I'm willing to make an exception for the departure on the parking spaces, and I'm willing to make an exception on uh, the existing nonconformity of the landscape islands. Most of that is because I want to be flexible with reuse of an existing site. Those being more compliant, I'm not opposed to, right? It 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 feels like if if we are somewhere between, you know, improving the existing facilities and being fully compliant, I think there's space in in between for reasonable minds to disagree. I don't, I don't feel strongly about an additional landscape island either way.
Yeah, if there were heavier foot traffic, I'd probably think differently about it.
The problem is we, we have to consider the vehicles that are parking on that property that's not included in this PUD, and then accessing this new community center. So it ends up being, like if you park on two nineteen Oak, there ends up being more pedestrian traffic, because you have a longer journey to get to where you're going on two oh six or two oh two or two eighteen forest.
Yeah, I think I see the reason that we're overparking two eighteen, though, is that you don't have to park at two nineteen to access this space. Right? Isn't that kind of the purpose?
I mean, I I do, I understand the um, the 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 regulation and associated with the parking. If we were to um, look at them individually. If we were to look at um, each uh, parcel, which is three, nine, including the fourth. If we look at them individually, how? Well, let me back up, because, let me back up, because they are, they they're being looked at as one, right? And they they have always been as one, because they're two partial, two different persons, and I'm aware.
As far as I'm aware, historically, um, as long as there has been childcare, um, in two oh two and two oh six East Forest, they have, um, you know, each used the same parking lot of two eighteen East Forest.
They always shared there, and they, and so just, 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 you know, taking it for a second. If they always shared, then how do the nonconformity come and exist between? Where did the nonconformity come in? Because we had two, we had two different parcels that were seen as one.
Are you saying like, how did the nonconformity of too much parking happen, or how did the nonconformity of like, not having enough landscape islands, not having enough uh, like landscape, or like parking lot trees?
I think you just answered the question.
Did he?
Yeah. I came into nonconformity because, because of the fact they were looking at um, the 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 um, additional islands. Or they were looking at, um, what's the first one? I'm sorry.
Um, like the additional, like all the excess parking or the?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, then like, with the site, you know, it's, it was the church, it's been a church, uh, or it's not a church anymore, but it was since at least nineteen, the nineteen forties. Um, you know, and our ordinance was, I don't even know if we had an ordinance back in the nineteen forties. But um, you know, at some point, they included these parking spaces. And so, you know, it definitely predates the current zoning ordinance um, that we have today.
From the parking lot, people are getting to high scope. And uh, was it two, yeah, and two oh two? I guess and two oh six. I remember the discussion around two oh six, I think, mentioning that parking lot, and I think we made some deviation because we knew that they were using that, or there was like a lease, or there's some kind of agreement between high scope and the church for the parking. So are people getting to high scope from the parking lot, let's say maybe, or only via that path that runs through two oh two and kind of connects two oh six, or are they coming around the back as well? You know, coming up on that uh, southeast corner.
Uh, would the applicant care to comment on current pedestrian paths through that site?
Please come up to the podium so that we can hear you for the record.
Two, two answers to that question, I think. Um, if you're asking about the staff that are in um, the Hutchins' house, they walk down the alley behind
Okay.
the fenced areas behind two oh two and two oh six.
Sorry, which building is that? Is that two nineteen?
Hutchins' house is uh,
Okay, oh, gotcha.
End to the westernmost.
The big one.
Right. Um, in terms of drop off for the kids, I'm not sure if they.
Yeah, it comes on uh, river.
Okay, so when kids come in the morning, um, and their part, parents might be dropping and taking their kids off, they're parking in the parking lot, um, are they going through the um, through the fence in the back, or are they coming around the front?
So, I'm sorry, when you say they're coming around to the front, would that be the front of?
Forest.
Forest?
Yeah, the forest.
Now, when they come in, into forest, are they coming to drop them off at the main building, or are they going to go straight to where they need to be?
Right, two oh two or two oh six.
Two oh two or two oh six.
Kids get dropped off directly to the houses that they're in.
I see they're kind of pointing towards it.
I'm not inclined to.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that, so I'm thinking like how how pedestrian traffic actually moves around the site. Yeah, I I don't, again, like if this were a shopping center, if there were like constant traffic and more than just a couple of times of like predetermined times a day. Sure, I mean, I could.
There are, because there's this whole swath of possible community center uses that are going on in this new in in the, the big new building now. So.
Yeah, but it's not gonna be like a target, you know? So I I don't see a lot of additional safety benefit to requiring the landscape islands. That's all I'm saying, I mean.
Okay, I'd like to move on to some of the other um, existing nonconformities. The next one we have on here is screening and landscaping. Um, I tend to be really persistent about screening when we have um, conflicting uses adjacent. This one is surrounded by a closed alley, vacated alley, and uh, maple court. Um, and so I don't think we directly abut any of those existing uses. The, I think the biggest conflict we have, since it's not internal to the PUD site here, is to three oh four forest. That's an existing nonconformity that I don't think is getting any worse with the proposed site plan here. Um, so I find myself forgiving of that, I think. Any thoughts on the screening? From other commissioners?
I don't know how they could add screening.
Right. They have the opportunity. Um, skipping over a few uh, nonconformities that are part of the departures that we already discussed. Um, there is a condition noted on on sheet twenty-two about dumpster dimensions that will have to be provided for staff approval. Um, the landscape plan, it looks like there is also a condition proposed for um, planting details for some of that plan that I don't think it's worth us discussing further here. Um, that brings us to screening of conflicting uses. I'm on page fifty-five of the packet now, which we've already discussed. Um, I don't think there is anything here about the adjacent properties. This would be more from the use than the parking than the previous screening requirement. I think same outcome applies. Uh, street trees, this was what I was thinking we were talking about when we started talking about those landscape trees initially. Uh, one street tree existed, seven new street trees were proposed. Uh, if the ordinance had its way for three hundred and thirty-two feet of frontage, we would be looking at uh, twelve street trees. So this one is a um, brought closer to compliance with the code. Um, but not quite up to conformity. I know there was some discussion by the applicant of not planting sections of the apron, with the driveway apron that might be replaced in the future. I think we have decent spacing of street trees along the street such that I'm not concerned about them being more dense.
What species are proposed for the street trees?
Uh, the American frontier elm.
Oh.
Yeah, it's um, it is resistant to elm disease. They're a medium-sized, you probably know this, I'm, I apologize.
No, go on.
They're like a medium-sized tree. I think they grow up to like twenty-five, thirty feet max. Um, they have pretty fall colors, too.
Yeah. I would be okay permitting this deviation if we required a bigger diameter of breast height.
A bigger diameter, what?
Diameter of breast height of the trees. What it, what's in the ordinance now? Two and a half inch caliper, probably. So I would just, you know, we're essentially cutting it in half of what's required for the street trees, so, which is fine as long as we don't have little switches planted for ten years.
Sure.
Which uh, DPS also has like the recommended street tree list. They wouldn't approve any maples, because the city's over fifty percent maple. Um, but you know, they, the applicant can definitely look at the recommended list, because ultimately DPS does have to approve um, the street trees that are proposed.
Um, I'm okay with either or. Like either twelve stu- street trees or seven of a larger caliper.
Twelve seems like a lot in that area.
Yeah, I think that's why I'm feeling flexible about not meeting the full requirement, but I guess if, if what you want are larger trees instead of just the reduction to seven. At the time currently required, what would you suggest?
For a D V A, is that what you're saying? Sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. So, um, twelve are required by the ordinance, which seems like a lot, right? Um, seven to you feels like a reduction of so much that you would, you would require a larger size.
Right.
Right.
So let me ask this, if, if we're talking about a minimum size of two and a half inches in diameter, what would the number be? If twelve is too much is the number ten? Is there a number of street trees that you would be accepting of greater than seven if that meant not adjusting the caliber size?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Um.
Because with, with department approvals here, I just want to make sure that we're not being.
Yes. I don't want to just throw a number out, so I'm going to measure the distance between the two across the street.
That's right.
It's on the other side of course.
Fifty feet between the street trees?
Yeah, what's the linear, what's the frontage?
Three hundred and thirty-two. That gets us to seven, doesn't it?
What? I guess seven's fine.
Yeah, the requirement, the ordinance would be one tree per thirty feet of lineal frontage, so, so I think if we're suggesting that. Across the street or other parts of forest seem well vegetated with fifty feet.
Well, I was just looking at the two that were right there.
Yeah.
And they are larger and they are the only two in that area, so they're kind of carrying the team across the street. But I don't want to arbitrarily throw out a number.
Definitely doing two streets.
I think it would be more appropriate to allow the seven, but go up to four inch caliper. I'm planting.
Any concerns with that from other commissioners?
Where's land over there anyway?
Yeah, yeah. You chose out.
We're done talking about the, um, existing non-conformities, so I just want to kind of check in with where we're at. As we're moving towards, I think the end of consideration for what's proposed here, um. I am, um, happy to see an adaptive reuse of, of vacant building, right? And I think that that's important here, um. I think a lot of the conditions that we need to settle on or, or vote on here. Some of them are constraints of the site, some of them are constraints of the site that, um, can be addressed. Um, perhaps should be addressed, um, but I think that the fact that zoning ordinance allows for flexibility with. Um, adaptive reuses is instructive for me, um. On that note, for the conditions that are proposed, I think we have some general agreement on what staff recommended. The exceptions that I noted from our discussion. Um, I get the impression that planning commission is more favorable to wheel stops being added to bring that, uh, that up to compliance with the ordinance. Um, it seems like there is comfort with requiring a larger diameter for street tree, um. And there is, I think, lasting disagreement on lighting temperature and on, uh, landscape island. Um, is there anything that I missed that we need to touch on before we move to motions? That covers it. For the sake of our motions, I don't know that I want to go through. Um, a dozen motions to try to get the right combinations of some of those conditions. Um, is there anything else that needs to be said about the minimum diameter for street trees, the lighting temperature of the landscape islands that hasn't already been said?
And also you guys, uh, we're talking about lot combination, is that something that planning commission is still interested in doing? Uh, is.
Yeah, we didn't really talk about lot combination, did we?
Yeah.
Let's talk about it. Um, right now the lots are not combined, um. As it's laid out now, two oh two and two oh. I can't keep these numbers straight, two oh two and two oh six. Uh, are used for childcare, those have special use permits to allow them to be used for childcare, that is working fine with, uh, uh, parking. Agreement with, um, you know, formerly with the church that, that was at two eighteen. It doesn't. Feel to me like there's a problem with that arrangement.
If we're approving this to be a P U D, we would have to update the parking agreement, otherwise it would be void, so if we just require a lot combination. Then we avoid having to do that parking agreement amendment.
Is the lot combination? Less onerous than a parking agreement?
You just go through the county register of deeds, get a new parcel ID number, there might be a two hundred dollar fee.
It's like an application on the city, um, I think it might be more than, actually, I don't remember what the cost is for that, but basically, yeah. It would, um, you'd go out a lot combo application, I would look at it, approve it, applies. Um, which in this instance it would, uh, go to the city assessor and then after that. Um, she'll send it to the county just prior to, um, twenty twenty-five, and then you go to the county register of deeds, and then they would basically do the lot combination.
How many days?
Well.
How many days? How many days was that just when Brian?
So, uh, the, apparently from my understanding with my discussion with the city assessor, um, she said that the county doesn't do lot combos or splits. Until the following year, so if you apply anytime in twenty twenty-four, that wouldn't be reflective until twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
But you could do it so it wouldn't be. Or like you wouldn't say, we have to wait until the county resets at the fiscal year, we just be, they pursued the lot combination application.
Yeah, yeah, and once that's in, once, um, I approve it and the city assessor approves it, it'll just go to the county, I don't think the county would have any reason to deny it.
So then combining, putting the application into, um, combine the lots. Have, um. To a certain degree have no time limit on the P U D in its completion in a year or start in a year.
No, I mean, I mean, if they, um, you know, if they get their approval tonight and, uh, if they just get the application in anytime early before December, like.
It's a parallel process.
Yeah, yeah.
So. It's either that or change the parking agreement that they already have now with themselves. Um, and just changing the name on the parking agreement, and I think, was it, was it two years ago, last year? I don't remember when, um, we started doing the Gretchen's house thing and all that, I don't remember when that, when that was. I don't, I don't remember if I was on council or in here, probably both, I guess.
I think you were in council, that was.
Okay, so the memories are bleeding together, um, but we approved that, um, you know, with that agreement, knowing that. Obviously, at some point, this, the use of this property was going to change. So I'm, I'm, I guess I'm curious what the draw is for, um. Uh, for combining these, uh, parcels.
Um, so I mean, ultimately, uh, part of the reason why they're including the three parcels in the same P U D. Is to meet that landscaping requirement of having minimum ten percent of the site landscape. Um, you know, with the site, uh, with the P U D relying on the three, um, the three lots. Was just landscaping, but also then parking, I think it kind of, in, in my opinion as staff, I think it would be more. Because it is something I did consider, like when I was doing the review, but I think it'd be more beneficial, um, to just combine the three lots. Um, versus, uh, having them amend the parking P U D, I think combining the three lots would ultimately simplify. Um, the requirements, and I think it would ultimately address some of the non-conformities that exist on the site due to lots being separate.
So they're all in the plan.
I'm sorry?
They're all in the plan.
Three, yep, two, two, two.
So I guess the question then is what difference does it make if they're all the same parcel?
It feels to me like if we, the solution that we want is for parking to be shared, then this is an either or scenario. That like, the, the, the outcome of this feels like it doesn't make a difference to planning.
Yeah.
Right, like there are going to be two childcare buildings there that use the parking from two eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and so.
Well, if, if they're not combined, if you, if they decide to sell off two oh two east force, suddenly we have. Two, we have. This P U D that is now not under the same ownership.
Mm-hmm.
And that was essentially a problem created by us. And you, it, that's a requirement of the P U D, to be under one form of ownership. Um, but it's not a requirement that they maintain that at all times, because you know, who knows what happens with high scope, anything can happen, we have to, you know. Consider all the possibilities and they are, they have the right to sell off that property regardless of what the zoning regulations are.
Isn't that what happens in residential P U Ds? You know, if you're designing an entire neighborhood, I mean, obviously you're going to split off lots.
I mean, for residential P U Ds, they tend to also be site condominiums, um, so, you know, ultimately people will buy their site condo.
Mm-hmm.
So.
The, the effect is the same, I, I, well, I was asking that because I think part of what I like about the way high scope has set up their campus is it does. Keep properties separate so that in the event that, I don't know, we need more housing at some point, um, it's much easier to then have. A childcare center that's effectively still a house that can then be sold as a residential use. Um. So, I mean, it just adds another step to someone who may want to buy one so that they don't have to then go and split it on the rolls again. But, you know, that's just a piece of it, I mean, I don't think it's the end of the world either way.
Right now, our. Our P U D and the language in the zoning ordinance reads that all portions of the development, uh, will continue to be operated and maintained by the developers or their successors. It is restrictive of selling off parts of this P U D.
Well, if they did, I mean, we, the city cannot prevent them from selling, it's just the P U D would suddenly.
Right.
The agreement would be void.
Yeah.
So we should probably want to do something where not, one part of the P U D agreement doesn't become void. Because with residential properties, the, the sell of the individual lots that are created is part of the P U D agreement. So that's how that works functionally different. So we're either like creating more work for the, the city attorney and the P U D development agreement and. Potential problems down the road or just doing a lot combination now.
It's not going to make a difference in the time, I mean, I don't really. Fine by me.
For me as a commissioner, I mean, it, it really doesn't make many difference, I could take it either way. But I think that's something that the, um, owners of the property, uh, um, need to take a look at, uh, um, themselves. Whether like they want to combine, um, their property into one, because in essence, once you do that, you got to sell it as one.
You can.
And then the gates, what?
Well, they could.
Chances saying about if the opportunity come up for housing again, i- 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 it's not gonna, it's not gonna be able to be done because it has to be sold.
Well, I think the P U D precludes some of that, but you can, I mean, you could always split it on the roll again, um, it just adds another step.
Um, yeah, it feels to me like the onus is on the, the owner, right? At, if they're trying to sell off part of this to update the P U D agreement for the part, and, and that's why, you know, I keep. I keep coming back to not seeing the downside of the either or as that allows them to pursue either option and, and accept the risk accordingly. Any other thoughts on the lot combination?
Are there any other, uh, risks that we're not considering? With that? Can we, can we name like one or two? I mean, there's some, I mean, there might be some that you know that we're not considering, I mean.
Oh, I would.
I'm not asking if there are any unknown.
I have no.
Um, I mean, if it's not going to make that much difference either way, I mean, maybe it makes more sense just go with those legally safer option.
The combination could be undone in the future.
Yeah.
So why not mitigate any downside risk now? What do you mean by that? I, I don't know, I'm responding.
I was, yeah, I was, I was asking if there were.
Don't know why we're still talking about this, so that's, that's moved.
Yeah, I was, I was asking if there were any risks, I don't really, yeah, I don't have to.
Um, I think that's everything that we need to discuss.
It was just a suggestion.
Uh, I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
So are we going, are you, are you going to add the, um?
You can move whatever you'd like to.
Oh, here we go.
That, all right, that's how it works. I, I generally like to see a consensus so that we don't have to get several conflicting motions for, um, the same adaptive reuse P U D. Um, but in this case, I don't know that we have a consensus among the commission on some of those conditions, so we'll figure it out through votes.
So with the, um, tradition, with the eleven conditions that, um, that are presented here. Are we going to add, um, the wheel stops, the larger diameter tree and the?
Yeah, so, so I think that there was consensus on adding the wheel stops to parking spaces per section one twenty-two, six eighty-three. If you're looking for language to add to a condition, um, there, I don't think was consensus on any of the other subjects. Um, but those included, uh, the applicant shall combine subject lots or update the shared parking agreement to reflect the P U D. And, um, potentially a four inch minimum diameter for the street trees at planting. But that was the second one, the applicant shall combine subject lots or update the shared parking agreement to reflect the beauty.
Oh, no, that, where did that come from?
My language doesn't, doesn't.
Where did that come from?
From right there, in case you're interested.
I, I, I'll, I'll do it.
Cause I'm not interested in making a motion that will, um, compel them to, um, do any type of, um, lot combination.
Well, we vote on the motions that we get.
Okay. Motion to recommend city council approve the adaptive reuse plan unit development for two oh two, two oh six and two eighteen, two eighteen east force avenue. With parcel IDs as noted in the staff report with the following findings and conditions. Should I say them all or just reference this report?
I'm fine if.
Yeah. Okay, we're not changing, we're just adding. Right? Can, with the findings and conditions listed in the staff report dated, what's this, August twenty twenty-four? With the additional conditions that the applicant at, shall add wheel stops to all parking spaces in compliance with section. One, two, two, six, eight, three, J. That the applicant reduce the color temperature of the pole mounted light to twenty-seven hundred Kelvin. That the applicant shall increase this diameter of the seven proposed street trees to four inch caliper. And that the applicant add one additional landscape island.
I'd support that motion. Sorry, just to make.
And, sorry, not done, sorry. And that the applicant pursue lot combination for the three subject parcels.
Can you repeat for me just?
Yes.
The added conditions, just to make sure we're clear.
Applicant shall add wheel stops to all parking spaces in compliance with one, two, two, six, eight, three, J. That the applicant shall reduce, reduce the color temperature of the pole mounted light to twenty-seven hundred Kelvin. That the applicant shall increase the diameter of the seven street trees to four inch caliper. And that the applicant shall add one additional landscape. And that the applicant shall add one additional landscape island.
Thank you.
And that the applicant shall pursue lot combination for the three subject parcels. Pursue.
We have a motion by Michelle. I continue my support. Second by Mike, can we get a roll call vote?
All right, uh, Commissioner Jones, chance?
Uh.
Would we discuss first?
Yes, we should.
Uh, sorry, what haven't we discussed?
Uh, I, I don't know that we've actually gone through all of the conditions.
Conditions. There's eleven conditions or.
Yeah, we went.
They just did before.
It's like site plan.
It is all of the things that we talked about when we were going through the other.
One, um, just one thing I realized that should be brought up is, um, the size of the loading space. Um, as was mentioned, did you say that you had only thirty feet to have a, um? Oh, okay. But you have enough space to make a, um, okay, okay, okay.
Cool. We're good. Was, what did you need for discussion?
Yeah, I thought maybe I was, um, maybe I was, uh, missing part of the motion. Did something get read into record or, or? Yes.
Yeah. So all of the, all of the findings.
Okay. So all those plus.
By staff.
Just wanted to be sure I had.
Oh, we missed that part.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the part I missed.
Okay.
The main part.
Just wanted to make sure I know what I'm voting on.
And I know what's.
All right, let's roll.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
All right, Commissioner Jones, chance?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunwoody?
Oppose.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis, Jr.?
Yes.
Commissioner Hollyfield?
Oh.
All right, um, it is four, two, two.
Motion carries. Um, for the record, um, I like to give folks the opportunity to explain opposition. Phil, would you care to take that away?
I, 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 I guess my main objection is the, uh, the combination of the lots. Uh, you know, as I've stated previously, um, if we're going to come here and just, uh, follow the ordinance verbatim, you know, why are we here? You know, when there's opportunity to make adjustment or changes, we should avail ourselves of those opportunities. And so that's why.
Thank you. I would add to that, that I think the same justification applies to the additional landscape island uh, and to the, uh, temper, lighting temperature. Um, with that on the record, I think that concludes our business for the adaptive reuse. Thanks for your support. Um, that brings us to the next item on the agenda this evening, which is the community benefits ordinance discussion.
So, um. So there isn't particularly much that I can say regarding the community benefits ordinance. I believe it's for the most part. Um, is it the same as what we previously had?
Yes. So what had happened with the CBO and council was that it was a uh, resolution to continue, uh, with the language that was currently there, knowing that we were going to readdress it. Um, and, and updated, but there were so many things coming up. After it had sunsetted that we just extended it so that then we could get input from every commission. We talked about certain commissions, getting input, uh, sustainably commission, the planning commission. Um, and we extended that to all commissions. So all commissions that have been needing the summer from July through August, uh, were asked to, to read through the, um, the ordinance and make any suggestions, uh, in terms of changes or additions that, uh, would be helpful.
Um, I will note that I think, um, so we're not voting, right? We're not motioning anything. So we'll give feedback directly to Steve. I think Josh can capture some of this in a memo essentially if we need that for council. Um, so I think we can be more informal in our feedback here, right? Um, so I want to kick it off. I have two things that I want to note about the community benefits ordinance. One of those things is that in section thirty dash five thirteen, um, we talk about quadruple bottom line philosophy and nothing in this section feels like it's relevant to how we're defining quadruple bottom line. This is talking about impact, uh, impacting value to the community. It's talking about profitability. Um, and it's not talking about, um, cultural vitality. It's not talking about social equality. And so I think that just for readability here. Um, I think that the guides for the quadruple bottom line philosophy need to refer to what those values are and not profitability.
Yeah, it reads like it was written by a developer.
Hmm.
Like.
By who?
Certainly wasn't.
What did you say?
Oh, yeah. Almost certainly.
So I, I, I think that it, it, it kind of makes sense if you're reading the definition that we have in this section of quadruple bottom line philosophy and reading this section thirty dash five thirteen together. Um, but thirty dash five thirteen on its own doesn't address anything that sounds like our quadruple bottom line values.
I mean, aren't the traditional triple bottom line things, people, planet, profit? I mean, that means profit that's in there. I don't know. Should it not be?
Well, the section isn't triple bottom line though, is it?
No, I mean, so you add another P, but I'm, but I feel like profit's still in there unless we're coming up with other stuff.
Yeah, no, and I don't have a problem with profit existing. It's just that this section talks about only profit, right? It doesn't address the other parts of the quadruple bottom line. Or if it does, it only does indirectly through like reference to quadruple bottom line getting defined.
I mean, a lot of it's light on substance to begin with.
Yeah. Um, the other thing, and this is a more minor, um, minor issue, but in section thirty dash five twelve G, we talk about other relevant business organizations being included in pre-bid meetings and conferences with advanced notice. And that one just kind of jumped out at me when I was reading it because I don't think that we have any indication of what an other, uh, relevant business organization would look like for this case.
Which section again?
Uh, I'm at the very top of page sixty-one in our packet. That is section thirty dash five twelve, uh, subsection G. That reads inclusion of local small businesses, minority owned business enterprises and women owned business enterprises and other relevant business organizations in pre-bid meetings and conferences. And that just feels to me like it's non-specific enough to be useless. Um, and so I think we might want some specificity there. I don't know what the intent was behind the language.
I think it, it is, um, if, I think the intent was about equitable distribution of, you know, either labor or opportunities for contracts or something like that. And I think that's the intent here.
So is relevant local? Is that what we mean by relevant?
Um, I'm just re, rereading.
Ambiguous.
You're in G, subsection G, inclusion of local small businesses, minority owned businesses.
Oh, yeah.
Hmm, yeah.
And other, yeah, I see, and other.
Item needed or just put there to be in totally inclusive.
I, yeah, I think they're trying to capture anything they maybe hadn't thought of already.
Could be target.
Other.
Sure. Target's getting a lot of, lot of.
Exactly. Um.
Yeah. So I guess who is it up to to define what's relevant then, right? Because these are standards that apply to following minimum standards shall be required of the community benefits agreement. Um, it just feels like that's tough to nail.
I mean, I, is there a reason, Steve, why maybe this doesn't just get a rewrite?
You mean the whole thing?
Yeah.
Well, that's the point. The, the point is to take the, take the input from the commissions.
There will be a rewrite.
There will be.
There will be a rewrite.
Do you have any insight on how that's going to happen? Uh, who's doing the rewriting, I guess?
I will be part of that. Uh, I'm sure, uh.
I'm sure, I'm sure do, Steve.
Uh, you know, uh, Israel Simmons will be involved in that. They have already, uh, started conversations with Ready, who is, so this originally came out of conversations with Ready and then council came up with their own things and they kind of did the Frankenstein, right? Um, and so we had a lawyer on city count, my predecessor, uh, Dan Vogt, uh, did not like what Ready put forward, so he recrafted things. So, um, the point is to, we've, we've taken this through several different, uh, I think we're up to five.
Right?
At least three, but I thought there were more, uh, times that we, this has been invoked. And so I was on the first one, which was for the Clark Road project, right? Um, and in going through that, there were various ambiguities. So I have notes on that and things like that, but, um, there were other things that came up in the other instances like, uh, Georgia states, they came up with problems with this and their points of, of ambiguities and things that should be, um, corrected. So it will get a rewrite. Um, how much uh, will be added or, or shifted is, is yet to be determined, but I think it's going to be a race to whichever faction comes with the proposal first.
So, um, Steve, would you, um, prefer to have, um, or any, uh, uh, any opinion? Um, comments, or would you prefer to have it, um, based upon the commission?
Well, I think any and all of those could be, you know, it, it doesn't have to be as, as Matt was saying, it doesn't have to be a resolution from the, from the commission. It just has to be input from the one. Cause there will, there will likely be public meetings about this to get more input. There's individual things that you want to comment on and, and submit to Josh, then we can certainly get that one as well.
We're just one of the relevant groups and organizations.
Sorry, what'd you say?
We're just one of the relevant groups and organizations.
When, uh, when do you need the comments by? Cause I told the planning commission and ZBA, uh, August twenty-sixth, you know, because of, uh, council meeting soon, but I'm sorry.
The meeting is on twenty-second.
Meeting's on the twenty-second, so you'd like it.
Twenty-seven.
Oh, twenty, okay, okay.
Oh, I've been getting these mixed up, the twenty-two and twenty, some reason.
Could I make a suggestion? I think I would. Um, just knowing how the process goes kind of deflates my interest in even discussing this further. Um, but I think if there were some kind of a, a process, if I were to make a suggestion, it would be that there would be a process um, in place for a rewrite and that it include maybe some people from planning or some people from other relevant. I didn't mean to say. Other, other commissions or, or bodies and, um, include some, uh, residents, things like that, that maybe there'd be a broader sort of commission to rewrite this. Um, and I'm, I know that gets messy in it, saying it sounds like a nightmare, but, um, yeah, I think without that, I, without that in place and at nine forty-five, I am like not really interested in. I, I, I feel like I know where it's going to go, so.
Well, we have the opportunity to share feedback now. We have it. Does anybody else have anything that they want to express to Steve?
I have at least one nitty gritty.
Hmm.
Question. I'm on page sixty-four of the PDF, section thirty-five, thirty, public notice. It references section eleven point thirteen of the city charter and I pulled up the city charter through the website, so I'm assuming it's the current one. I'm on page sixty-four of the PDF. Um, it references a section of the charter that.
Are you on page sixty-five of the PDF?
Oh, wait.
Does it show up in both spots?
What section?
No, I'm on sixty-four.
What's the section?
Uh, section thirty-five, thirty. Cool.
Yep, public notice.
I'm not seeing section eleven point thirteen in the city charter. So.
Probably when they had planned.
And my, it came from my question, which is why is the notice within a thousand feet of the, the subject property rather than the standard like three hundred, um, from the state? And so I was like, oh, maybe it's in the city charter, but it's not, that section's not there, so.
No, I think, oh, it just got expanded. Um, yeah, so green.
To include other relevant.
Yeah, yeah. Cause that was five hundred, wasn't it originally? Was that originally five hundred? I want to say.
Um, it's always been five, a thousand.
Built different.
For some reason it felt, yes.
And then.
Maybe it was the lower, some of those.
Well, because for some of these things like out, out on Clark Road, you know, a thousand feet, there are, there are people that live well beyond a three hundred foot line that will be impacted by those.
Sure. Right. But it also doesn't say that it has to be published like in a local online publication, which I feel like is way more accessible and affordable. And probably people check that more than their mail.
How often is this, I'm sorry?
Section eleven.
I also do want to add, um, the city has a tendency to, um, have things in its charter with public noticing that it, that goes beyond what the state requires.
Hmm.
And so that does open us up when we expand and, um, have more requirements or noticing them what the state requires. Um, we're having more errors, potentially having litigation. If there is an error, it costs the city more money to do mailings to people, every property from a thousand feet versus three hundred.
Oh, absolutely. The first time that this was invoked, the, the, we started to have meetings and they hadn't been publicly noticed. There were, there were people living adjacent to the property that never got the notice. And those things have been sent out supposedly, but you know, in, in, uh, those first meetings, there were another rule showed up. I didn't get a notice.
I mean, that's happened at most of these meetings though, right? Like to, to Michelle's point about people checking their mail, I feel like we see that for, for, you know, special use permits or for planning commission things, that there are always people that don't see it.
True.
Regardless of like how reliably that is noticed.
Even when they saw.
Yeah.
But it was the, it was the sheer number of people.
Yeah.
First time and, and the, uh, internal corroboration that.
Sure. That helps.
We had to postpone the meeting for two weeks.
Okay. So perhaps the noticing radius for further discussion from council, but I think the note about referencing the right part of the city charter is a good start.
Is nineteen ninety-four the most recent charter?
Um.
Doesn't sound right.
I think it was twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, twenty twelve, something like that.
I do see that date nineteen ninety-four.
Yeah, the one online.
There is, because you're required to have it updated.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, right. They're worth in nineteen ninety.
That's, the one online is ninety-four. So there, there could be a eleven thirteen on our real charter.
Uh, any other feedback on the proposed ordinance? And I want to note that we will have the opportunity, right? You said until the twenty-sixth was the date we settled on to provide written input.
Is there a date that you would want it earlier or, because I could email it to you. I could email it to Tracy. Any, any written comments?
Um, as long as we have it before, um, of tomorrow, we, today's Wednesday, we need to hear that.
Cause I think the deadline to put things on councils.
It's Friday.
It's Friday at two PM or one PM.
Right, but that's not, so I will check with Tracy or if you can check with Tracy tomorrow, I'm pretty sure this is on, going to be on. Um, although they would have said that earlier today, but, um, but I think this was, this was intended at the last meeting that we had, that everybody knew these things were going to be coming forward, but I, I expect that there are some commissions that haven't done this. And so we will be taking that input really down the road, since there isn't a process that's been defined.
Hmm.
Um, you know, we'd like to have this in line for the meeting on the twenty-seventh to be submitted to the record. So here's the comments that we got back from this. That will be put into the process and if there's significant, um, material changes to this document, then yeah, then we go through it and that could, that could influence it. All the commissions came back and said, oh, no, we're fine with it. But we'd still go through the process. I know it's not fine, but, um, but yeah, we can get it by the twenty-sixth. Um, I go.
Okay. Okay, noted. Appreciate it.
So.
That brings us to the end of new business.
To Josh by the twenty-fifth and just to. To Josh by the twenty-fifth and Josh to.
Yep, yeah, and, and, and also, also, public comment at city council, right, is not out of the questions and off deadlines. Um, that brings us to the end of new business, which means public comment time, a motion would be in order.
Moved.
Motion by Brian, support by Michael, all in favor say aye.
Alright.
There's anybody present that wishes, oh, I should say all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Anybody present that would care to participate in the public comment? Now is your opportunity to do so.
Nobody on.
Move to close, public comment.
Motion by Brian, support by Phil, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Brian, support by Phil, all in favor say aye. Oppose, motion carries, meeting adjourned.